Okay, we're gonna begin today's, we're gonna begin the public hearing for December 5th, 2023. I asked that everyone, uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter? Commissioner Odoricio?
I am here. I ask that everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the five. Public, which is a nation.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Vote. Next up is, uh, we have awards of proclamations, and this morning we begin with a proclamation to celebrate our diverse winter holidays. And learning about the customs, the traditions, and the significance of each holiday can deepen our understanding and appreciation of the cultures. And, uh, and, uh, I'm sorry, can you guys hear us? Okay. All right, how about if I get closer? We begin with the proclamation to just celebrate the diverse winter holidays, is that better? Uh, learning about customs and traditions and significance of each holiday can deepen our understanding and appreciation of the cultures that enrich our world. Whether you celebrate Diwali, Kwanzaa, Rahuatsu, Hanukkah, or Christmas, in Adams County, we honor them all with respect and an open heart. At this time, I ask that Commissioner Pinter, please read the proclamation.
Yes, I would be honored to. Whereas, the United States is composed of many different races and cultural backgrounds that observe and participate in various winter celebrations each year. And whereas Adams County and April want to recognize and acknowledge the celebration of all winter holidays and believe the holidays mentioned below represent a large majority of those within our county. And whereas, um, Ma'ali Ahnabi is the Muslim celebration of the birth of the Prophet Muhammad. Ma'ali is celebrated in different ways by Muslims in different places. Some highlight the national pride while raising the flag and ceremonies at national monuments. Others take on a more festive carnival-like atmosphere with exchange of gifts or gifts to the poor. This year, Ma'ali Ahnabi was celebrated September 26th through September 27th. And whereas, Ratsu is the anniversary of Buddha's enlightenment and traditionally celebrated on December 8th by meditating through the night to dawn. And Hanukkah is the Jewish eight-day wintertime festival of lights, celebrated with nightly menorah lighting, special prayers, and fried foods. This year, Hanukkah is celebrated from December 7th through 15th. And whereas, winter solstice happens this year on December 21st and is the astronomical first day of winter in the northern hemisphere and the shortest day of the year. Since prehistory, many cultures had marked the winter solstice with festivals, rituals. And whereas, Christmas is an annual festival commemorating the birth of Jesus Christ, observed primarily on December 25th as a religious and cultural celebration among billions of people around the world. And whereas, Kwanzaa was founded in 1966 and is an annual celebration of African-American and Pan-African culture from December 26th through January 1st, bringing a cultural message which speaks to the best of what it means to be African and human in the fullest sense. And now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams of the State of Colorado proclaims December 5th, 2023 as a winter holiday. And we encourage all residents to honor the rich diversity of various cultures found within our county, and it's signed by all of us. Just wanna say, um, congratulations and happy holidays to all of you. We did a lot of celebrating, um, this particular weekend. I was honored, and I know Commissioner Tedesco was there as well to participate in the Human Services North Pole event. It's my understanding that we gave out, uh, toys and gifts to children and their parents, um, to help them with their own celebrations of about 290 families. And I'm just sort of like looking in the audience, folks are nodding at me that I got that right. So, um, many of these families, we helped them shop. I was stationed in the gift shop for the kids to shop for their parents, and they picked out all kinds of sweet treasures. Um, the younger ones had a hard time understanding what was for them and what might be for a sister or grandma or an auntie, but it was sweet to see the joy on their faces. And it was sweet to see other ones celebrating each other for the various ways that we can pause and remember, um, and give thanks and give joy this December season. So, happy holidays to all of you as you celebrate.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Pinter. Anyone else have a comment? Commissioner Tedesco?
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate, you know, county supporting in the North Pole event with our Human Services Office. Katie did a great job. I know we see the deputy director up there, he did a great job as well. Maybe you could help enlighten, cause I know that even the employees didn't understand how important this was and what it meant to the families because one of the statistics that, that you had mentioned to me, um, was how fast it sold out. You had determined that there was right around 300 slots, and you'd put it up and it had sold out in a matter of minutes? Twenty minutes. I think that's incredible when you talk about, you know, how many people we service throughout the Human Services Department and the need that is out there, especially during the holiday season. And to sell out those tickets for this type of event in 20 minutes is just incredible. Um, and it just means that we're not meeting the need of our community. So maybe this next year, throughout the year, uh, we can start meeting that need on a higher priority, but, you know, I just wanna say thank you again for, you know, all the work that you've done, and even with just 20 minutes of advertising and getting sold out, you did a tremendous job of reaching out to the public, so thank you.
Commissioner Pinter?
I forgot, thank you so much. I forgot to mention, uh, the Town of Bennett is doing their gift exchange holiday celebration similar, um, and as Commissioner Tedesco mentioned, uh, the event sold out quickly. Um, it's no, no cost to attend, but as people signing up for gifts, uh, the Town of Bennett is doing their celebration. So if you have any fear of missing out on any FOMO that you didn't get to participate in holiday joy this past weekend, Town of Bennett is doing theirs on Saturday. Also really joyous, I usually go, uh, with my kiddos to help hand out gifts. It's beautiful and it's wonderful to see the community coming together to help each other. Um, so if you're missing out, you can join the Town of Bennett, or A Precious Child is still accepting family adoptions and child adoptions, I think for the next few days, five days or so, you can check out A Precious Child. And then I also had heard from Westminster Public Schools that they're doing a drive for December 11th to search around. I, um, as Commissioner Tedesco was talking, he reminded me that there are others coming, um, into this space to try to be helpful. So I'm sure if you have any FOMO about missing out, um, Town of Bennett would love to have you, Westminster Public Schools, or A Precious Child.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move along. Uh, at this time, we also opened up the meeting for Citizen Communication. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Chair, we do have four people signed up to speak today, one for general comment and three for today's land use cases.
Okay, could you please ask the, uh, person who has a general comment to feel free to come down?
Lori Richard Armstrong.
Okay, Ms. Armstrong, if you would please state your full name and your address for the record.
Yes, Lori Reichardt Armstrong, 16197 Harris Way, Brighton, Colorado 80602.
Go ahead.
Um, I am here to discuss, um, I am still waiting to move my garage. Uh, we applied for a permit on October 12th, um, and we're still waiting to get that permit processed. As far as I can see, um, the fire department is wanting us to put in a road to our backyard with a huge turnaround in it, not quite sure. Um, but they're using, when we originally built it, they're using the stuff from back then and mixing it up with now, I think. Um, so I'm hoping somebody could help us get this processed because, um, Don Summers is suing us and he wants it moved by April 1st, otherwise he will come in and bulldoze it and charge us. And so I've taken out a $75,000 loan. And, um, we need to get this moved ASAP, so I would appreciate help in getting that permit.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up. Just, we're, I would ask that staff please, uh, meet with the constituent. Um, obviously, we're not the fire department, but it does deal with the overall process, so they might be able to have a conversation with the constituent, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that did not sign up that would like to speak at this moment rather than later on during the land use hearing? All right, seeing none, moving along. Do we have any communication from the, from the county commissioners? Hasn't already been stated? Nope. All right, moving on from there, we have, uh, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the consent calendar, we'll vote. And that is approved. Moving on to new business county manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. We, uh, have three items, they're all related, and I asked Nancy to step up to the lecture. Wanted to preface this by mentioning that our budget process is unique. Mystic about it, but we're at, uh, not quite the end of the road, but, um, hopefully closer to that point. Uh, Nancy can unpack what still remains, um, which is attributable to some work that needs to be done on the valuation front in coordination with the assessor's office. However, we do have a recommended budget overall, and this was a discussion that we had on study session back on November 14th. Have some moving parts that remain, but certainly want to take the work of staff and your focus and time to, to help us get this FY24 budget, uh, wrapped up.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Nancy Duncan, Budget and Finance Director, and I'm here to present the three resolutions to adopt the 2024 Adams County budget in accordance with state statute and so that residents have the opportunity for public comment and input. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Thornton, Northland Thornton Sentinel on November 30th, 2023. The 2024 Adams County budget is structurally balanced, meaning that we are not using any fund balance for daily operations. The 2024 proposed revenues are $790,40,410. The 2024 proposed expenditures are $821,592,281. The overall use of fund balance is $31,551,871, with capital and one-time projects totaling In the general fund, the use of fund balance is $14,230,457, with $40,772,221 in capital and one-time projects. This shows that Adams County is following the fund balance policy established by the Board of County Commissioners and using fund balance for only capital and one-time projects. Adams County is not using any fund balance for daily operations. Today, we are presenting three resolutions shown on your public hearing agenda under new business. Item one, which will adopt the 2024 budget by fund. Item two, which will appropriate the 2024 sums of money to various funds. Item three, which will approve the 2024 Adams County fee schedule. Due to the special session held by the state, we will not be certifying the mill levy today. With the signing of SB 23B dash 001, the assessor's office was given until January 3rd to certify final assessed valuations. This date is usually December 10th, but with the special session changes, the date has been extended. The date to certify the levies was also extended to January 10th. The usual date for certification is December 15th. We will be coming back to public hearing when the assessor has completed the valuations to certify the mill levy. I'd like to answer any questions you or the public may have regarding the budget for 2024.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Henry?
So I've, I've gotten some calls. Uh, part of that, uh, of our budget is the fact that we do have a pay increase for our employees, am I right?
Yes.
And that pay increase includes our deputies, am I correct?
Yes.
Um, now, if the sheriff decides not to give pay increases, what happens to that amount of money? Cause it's in his control, cause he's a separate elected official.
Um, it remains in his budget.
But it remains in his budget if he doesn't give the, and what is the percentage for the raises?
Um, approximately 5%.
5% for our deputies in DA's office? Okay, so it's entirely up to those elected officials to give out those raises?
It is.
Okay, but the Commissioners have approved it.
The Commissioners, if, if we move forward.
If we approve today.
Yes. Yes, if you approve the resolutions today, yes, you all have.
This is when Nancy has high stress, yeah, wondering what questions we're gonna have, but, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others? I, I will make a statement. If I find out that we approved a 5% pay increase for our employees and somebody doesn't actually implement that, we're gonna have a serious conversation with whoever makes that decision, so Commissioner Tedesco?
I, I think that deserves a, a explanation of, you said that it returns to his fund balance, right? But can it be used for anything other than the pay increase?
Commissioners, I, I think we might be getting into a legal issue here that I, I may need to respond to, so I don't know, if you want to go into executive session, I can answer that question, um, from a legal standpoint. Um, I think, you know, Nancy's answering from a logistics standpoint where that money stays, um, but I think we are probably getting into a legal issue in terms of powers and authorities.
I didn't think that was, I didn't think that was, so I apologize if I'm asking anything that's legal. I think that it's, you know, it's a legitimate question of asking, where does the money go and what can it be used for if not for pay increases? Because, you know, this is about approving a budget and the items within the budget. And if we are approving an across-the-board 5% increase, although it is granted to each elected official to distribute that in whatever process they feel deemed appropriate within their control, right? It still has to equal the 5%, am I correct? And if it doesn't, then those monies go into some fund somewhere, right?
Yeah, I guess I, I would argue that as the board, if you were allocating money specific for salary increases, that is what it is allowed to be used for. And so if the elected officials, for some reason, chose not to, um, increase salaries in their departments, I would think that money comes back to the board for determination on where it should be used.
That's, that's reassuring, thank you very much, and, you know, to hold up approving a budget, but I would ask that the chair, uh, have a conversation about that and discuss what those processes are like you had.
Absolutely. Here's the deal. I, whether, what Heidi just mentioned, as the county attorney just says, this is the argument that we would make. Now, there's obviously another argument that would come back. But at the end of the day, the county commissioners are responsible for allocating, for, for the budget. And whether that accountability comes after the fact of somebody does a bait and switch or the next time they come and ask for money is the whole thing. The point is, I believe accountability will be there one way or the other, and if we need to have additional, uh, meeting on it, maybe, uh, from the legal standpoint versus the operational standpoint, I'd be okay with that, too. I don't know if we need to do that today, I think we have time before we make the final, um, the bottom line is, I'm hearing from the board that we're okay to proceed today because we want those 5% increases for the employees. Uh, I would be okay to hear a motion on that, and then if we feel like there's an issue that needs to be addressed, I would support Commissioner Tedesco's request to have such a meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, do you want these as all three, or do you want them one by one?
In the past, we've done them as, as a group, um, but it's up to you how you'd like to do that.
Thank you, I'm looking at the clerk for, for guidance as well.
Um, just for the record, to be clear, I would prefer that it would be separate.
Hey, yes ma'am, we'll do them one at a time. And Nancy, we've had so many different meetings, um, hours and hours in study session and all kinds of comment from the other elected officials. This is a simple vote, um, but it represents months of work and all the compliments to your team, where county budgets have been hotly debated, both in the ballot box and in the legislature. So thank you for persisting and putting together a budget that we can approve today. And with that being said. And with that being said, I move to approve item one, the resolution approving expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? And we have a second. Vote. That passes. Commissioner Pinter, do you have another motion?
Apparently I do. Okay. So I move to approve item number two, the resolution appropriating sums of money to the various funds and amounts and for the purposes set forth.
Second. That passes.
I move to approve the resolution approving Adams County 2024 fee schedule for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January.
Second. No. Passes as well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you, the commissioners, the executive leadership team, and the department directors and staff for working with the Budget and Finance Department to prepare the budget. This was kind of a different year for everybody. And I'd like to specifically call out my team today. The last two years have been challenging for me, and they have upheld me like you wouldn't believe. And I'm just so grateful to be here, and I'm grateful to my team. Mark Osborne, Mark Kalutha, who's home with sick babies right now, Tim Nijedlow, Renella Olson, and Ellie McLean. So thank you very much.
Nancy, I just want to say thank you and to let people know that with your help, our budget reflects our values. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else for new business? County attorney.
Good morning, commissioners. I would ask, as time allows today, that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024E for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding an economic incentive.
We have a motion.
Move to approve.
That passes. We'll have that executive session later. Land use. Do we need five minutes? We're going to go ahead and adjourn for five minutes, take a short recess for five minutes, and come back for the land use. Okay. All right, we're going to begin, please. We're going to begin the land use portion of the public hearing. Please begin.
Good morning, commissioners. Nick Eagleson with the Community and Economic Development Department, and this is the Core Park Denver Distribution Center, case number PRC 2022-6, and it's located at 7700 York Street. So this involves several requests on five total parcels, approximately 18 acres in size. The first request is for a comp plan amendment on two of the five parcels from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-lose employment. Also, a rezoning request from agricultural one to industrial one and commercial five. And then a minor subdivision to create two lots from those five parcels. And then accompanying that would be a subdivision improvement agreement for any public and private improvements on site. However, at this time, the applicant is requesting a continuance of the Core Park Denver Distribution Center, comp plan amendment, rezone, minor subdivision, and subdivision improvement agreement to the Board of County Commissioners' agenda on January 30th, 2024. And the applicant is available for any questions as well as staff. Thank you.
Okay. If the applicant has more to add to that? If not, what I could do, does the applicant want to say, make any statements about the continuance? I don't see anyone jumping up. Okay, go ahead. And then what we'll do is, we'll just make sure that there's nobody from the public who came to testify on that, and then we can have a motion for a continuance.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to thank the board for their time and apologize for the continuance. We just ran into an unforeseen large expense that we need to analyze and very much appreciate your time.
What's your name and address for the record?
My name is Alex Ringsby. My address is 6 Cherrymore Drive, Inglewood, Colorado.
Thank you, Mr. Ringsby. All right, is there anyone from, that was signed up to speak on this matter?
On the list, it does state just land use, but I do believe they're all here for the next case.
Okay, let me just double check. Is there anyone that's in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Or that specifically came out on this case? I don't see any. So we'll come back to the board for action on the request for continuance. Do we have a motion?
I move for the continuance of PRC 2022-0006, and I move for the continuance.
Okay. We have that motion to continue this to January 30th, 2024. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll vote on that. That passes. We'll see you back after the New Year. Enjoy the holidays. How much time do you need to set up for the next one? Or can you, you can, all right, the hot swap. Swap it up.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Leila Bajlan. I'm a senior long-range planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. In the case before you, it's PRC 2023-15. This is the Horse Creek Retreat. And the subject of, or the location of the subject properties are west of Emboden Road from just north of East 152nd Avenue to East 160th. So within this case, there are eight total parcels that total about 288 acres in size. There are two separate requests within this case, the first being a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation from agricultural large scale to residential low. It's important to note that the Planning Commission does approve or deny comprehensive plan amendments, and the Planning Commission has approved the comprehensive plan amendment, and it does need ratified by the Board of County Commissioners this morning. And then there is a zoning map amendment or a rezone to change the zone district designation from agricultural two and agricultural three to agricultural one on all 288 acres. This request does not create any additional lots. The rezoning and the comprehensive plan amendment themselves are not the mechanism to create additional lots within unincorporated Adams County. This only allows for the applicant to move forward with a major subdivision that would be the mechanism that creates additional lots. So if approved, the applicant would be required to pursue a major subdivision. This includes a preliminary and a final plat. And at that time, the applicant would be required to provide documentation that demonstrates that there's adequate water availability and adequate water rights on the subject site. So at that time, staff would send that documentation to the State Division of Water Resources, and the state would confirm that, yes, there is a 300-year water supply for every lot that is being proposed, or no, the applicant does not have a 300-year water supply. If at that time, there is not adequate water rights for every lot being proposed, then the major subdivision cannot be approved, and no additional lots would be created. Additionally, we would require documentation that demonstrates that they can either provide a sewer or a septic system on each individual lot. And this would be reviewed by Adams County Health Department, and they would determine if a septic system could be placed on every lot within the subdivision. Additionally, as part of the major subdivision, the applicant would be required to submit for a subdivision engineering review, which would look at traffic impacts as a result of the proposed subdivision. So this not only looks at the infrastructure within the subdivision, it looks at the surrounding roadways and the impacts that this request would have. If there are public improvements required, the applicant would have to submit into a subdivision improvement agreement with the county, which would then require them to make those improvements as a result of their development. And if approved for the major subdivision, the applicant would be required to create a homeowners association that could then create their own covenants and restrictions, then that would be enforced by the homeowners association for the subdivision. And because this is an A1 rezone, all proposed development within this proposed subdivision or the future subdivision would have to meet all of the Adams County development standards and regulations and performance standards for the A1 zone district. So it's important to note that these requests do not create additional lots, but there are future applications that would be heard by the Board of County Commissioners that will create those lots. So this provides the location of the subject parcels. As previously mentioned, there are eight total parcels associated with this request. They're located along Emboden Road, just north of East 152nd Avenue and south of East 160th Avenue. As you can see within this image, there's currently a mix of lot sizes within this area of Adams County. The Horse Creek reservoir can be seen directly to the northeast of the subject property, but there are a lot of scattered residential plan unit developments, and then some agricultural parcels still left in this area. So this provides a closer aerial image of the eight total parcels. Seven of the eight parcels are undeveloped, and the most northeast parcel does have a single-family home and then associated accessory structures currently built on it. And then there is some oil and gas equipment located on some of the parcels. So currently, the properties are zoned as agricultural three and agricultural two. This is not a map error. There was a rezone that rezoned the western portion of those properties to agricultural two. The agricultural two zone district does allow for dwelling sites in 10 acres or larger. And then the agricultural three zone district, which is this lighter green, is primarily for agricultural uses, and housing is secondary on these parcels. And those sites would have to remain 35 acres or larger. And as you can see within this area, there is a mix of zoning. So directly to the east of the subject properties is the estates at Bromley North and South, which a lot of our older plan unit developments were required to rezone to one of the Adams County zone districts, and then the PUD is an overlay. So estates at Bromley North and South is actually zoned as agricultural one, and then it does have a PUD overlay that does amend some of the A1 requirements. And then, as you can see, directly to the southwest and then the northwest, there are some residential plan unit developments that provide for higher density within this area. So this provides the future land use map. So all eight parcels currently have a future land use designation of agricultural large scale. This land use category features large lot agriculture and may have corporate agricultural operations on the property. This is primarily located out in eastern Adams County and would only support the agricultural three zone district, so holdings of 35 acres or larger. And as you can see, this area does have a mix of future land use designations. So the tan within this image is the residential low designation. This is what the applicant is proposing to change the future land use designation to. So the residential low is located directly to the west, to the south, and to the east of the subject properties. And then this green in the image is parks and open space that's associated with Horse Creek, and then also Box Elder Creek to the west as well. So in reviewing a comprehensive plan amendment, the criteria of approval includes that the comprehensive plan amendment is consistent with the goals and the policies of Adams County Conference of Plan, that the comprehensive plan amendment is consistent and/or compatible with the land use, transportation, and open space maps in the Adams County Conference of Plan, and finally, that the comprehensive plan amendment advances the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and property owners of Adams County. So this is the future land use map with the change in the future land use. So again, the Planning Commission has approved the comprehensive plan amendment. It would need to be ratified by the Board of County Commissioners this morning. This provides consistency with what is located existing today to the west, to the south, and to the east. So per chapter two of the Adams County Conference Plan, the Advancing Adams Plan, this land use category is most appropriate for suburban and ex-urban areas in Adams County and is primarily consists of single-family housing. This designation replaced the in Adams County and is primarily consists of single-family housing. This designation replaced the estate residential uh category from the 2012 Comprehensive Plan, and then zone districts that would be allowed or supported within this future land use designation include agricultural one, RE, which is residential estate, and then residential one C. So all of these properties uh that currently have a tan color or a future land use of residential low could uh rezone to agricultural one, RE, or R1C, and it be supported by the comprehensive plan or the uh future land use map. And then when looking at the rezoning, the criteria of approval include that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the request is consistent with the development standards, and it complies with the development standards, and finally, that the request is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. So looking at the proposed rezoning, this would be the zoning map if the rezone were to be approved today. So it would provide agricultural one zoning on all 288 acres of this uh proposed redevelopment. Um, this would be consistent with zoning that is already located in this area, and it's important to know what the agricultural one zone district is intended for. So this is to provide a rural, single-family dwelling dris- district where the minimum lot area for a home site is intended to provide for a rural living experience. So the agricultural one zone district is appropriate for these areas. It would not be appropriate in suburban areas or southwest Adams County. Additionally, there are several PUDs in this area, one directly to the uh east and then one directly to the southwest uh that are currently zoned as agricultural one. So this zoning designation and this character is currently existing within this area of Adams County. So when looking at the agricultural one dimensional standards, agricultural one requires a minimum lot size of 2.5 acres in size, and then a minimum lot width of 150 feet. So again, if the applicant does not have adequate water rights or does not apply for and be uh is approved for the major subdivision, these lots would remain as is in size, and they would be zoned as agricultural one and could only support one single-family home per lot. The proposed lot size for the eight parcels ranges from 35 to 38 acres in size and has a lot width of 600 to 1400 feet in size. So they are meeting all the dimensional standards of the agricultural one zone district. And then minimum required setbacks for the A1 Zone District include a front of 30 feet, a rear of 20 feet, and then a side of 10 feet or one foot or two foot of height, whichever is greater. So in considering compatibility uh for the rezone and the comprehensive plan amendment, it's important to note what development is existing within this area. So this map does highlight some of the residential plan unit developments that have been approved and developed within this area. So starting in the most uh northwest corner in yellow, that's Box Elder Creek Ranch, and this was a plan unit development that was approved for one acre lots. And then going to the south in the deep purple, uh, that's Box Elder North Home Site, which is approved for two acre lots, and that development does extend to the west. It's just cut off by the screen. And then uh, the pink is Viewpoint East. That was approved for 10 acre lots. The olive green is Wheatland Heights um directly to the southwest. This was approved for four to five acre lots. Um, the red here is Estates at Bromley North and South. That is zoned as agricultural one, uh, but the PUD did amend some of the lot sizes, so they are 10 acres in size. And then to the directly to the south of the subject properties in green, this is Crestwood Estates. This is a more significant development that that does span to the south as well, and those were approved for two to five acre lots. And then finally, uh, to the east here in uh orange, this is Kavanaugh Hills, and again, they were approved for two to five acre lots. So when looking at some of the surrounding developments, the proposed um rezone would allow for a minimum of 2.5 acre lots, which actually falls roughly in the middle of what the development uh patterns have been out here and what the existing lot sizes are. So this provides the conceptual site plan that was provided by the applicant. While the site plan is not binding with a rezone or a comprehensive plan amendment, the applicant is aware of the water rights that they have on the property, and they are not proposing to max out the density uh for the A1 Zone District. So they are proposing a total of 48 lots that would range in size from four to 10 acres. And there is no lots within this proposed subdivision that would be uh 2.5 acres or uh in size. And this uh is not applied for yet, but this would be a major subdivision preliminary and final plat that would be heard by both uh the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. So this subdivision, when applied for, would come back in front of the Board of County Commissioners. So here are a couple of images of the subject site. This is looking to the west along East 160th Avenue. The subject properties are located on the uh left-hand side of the screen, and you can see the existing single-family home um on one of the northeast parcels. This image is looking to the south along Emboden Road. The subject properties are located on the right-hand side of the screen. Again, you can see that single-family home and then all of the vacant land that is associated with this request. And this image is looking to the east into uh one of the entrances into Estates at Bromley North. As you can see, the Estates at Bromley No- North is a rural subdivision that does provide for higher density than would be allowed in the agricultural three zone district. And then this image is looking to the southeast. This is looking at the intersection of Emboden Road and then East 152nd Avenue. And as you can see, there are several uh single-family homes that have been developed within this area. And finally, this image is looking from East 160th Avenue across the subject parcels and all of the vacant land that's associated. So during the referral period, staff sent out a total of 162 notifications. All property owners and occupants within one mile of the subject site were notified of this request. We received a total of 50 public comments from 39 unique individuals. So of the public comment, two comments were neutral um and did not state support or opposition to this request, but noted concerns about wildlife in the area and then water availability for the proposed lots. Um, 48 of the public comments were in opposition stating concerns about water availability, the lot size, um, and additional density within this area, uh, traffic concerns with the proposal of new lots, uh, the potential for light pollution, uh, the potential for unsightly homes. Again, it's important to note that all homes that would be developed would have to meet the Adams County Development Standards and Regulations and the performance standards for the A1 Zone District. Um, there were concerns about the loss of mountain view, and then just an overall desire for there to not be any additional housing in this area. And then we also notified several referral agencies throughout this process, and we did not receive any referral agencies in opposition, and the Division of Wildlife did provide comments um that would provide for best practices considering the potential for wildlife in this area being adjacent to the Horse Creek Reservoir. Um, at the time of subdivision, staff would add on conditions um that would ensure that uh burrowing owls are considered, the mule deer population would be considered. So all of that would be added on as conditions during the subdivision process as the rezone cannot be conditioned based on a division of wildlife. So this case was heard at the Planning Commission on September 28th. The Planning Commission approved the comprehensive plan amendments uh in a vote of six to one and recommended approval of the rezone six to one to the Board of County Commissioners. The Planning Commission did have some questions on why the applicant did not pursue a planned unit development on this site, and the applicant and staff were able to answer um that all of their proposed development could be achieved within agricultural one zone district. Um, additionally, planned unit developments um don't age with time, so they don't, they they're not keeping up to date as development changes um within the area. Uh, they also had concerns about water and sewer services. Again, that would be considered at the time of subdivision and not at the rezone or the comprehensive plan amendment, but the applicant does have information on water rights um if the Board of County Commissioners does have questions. And there was also questions on the Colorado Parks and Wildlife comments, um especially for the uh adjacency to Horse Creek Reservoir. There were five members of the public that spoke in opposition to this request. Um, and these members of the public noted concerns uh that included loss of views, compatibility with the surrounding properties. Estates at Bromley North and South does have 10 acre lots. Um, they had concerns for additional density within this area, affordability of the potential homes, and there was a comment that uh was concerned with drainage, which would be considered at the time of subdivision as well. So staff today recommends ratification of the Planning Commission approval, the comprehensive plan amendment with three findings of fact and two notes to the applicant. And staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the rezone with four findings of fact. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Do we have any, do we have any questions from the board? And at this time, could the applicant please come forward? State your full name and your address for the record.
Thank you. Carl Barton, Kimley Horn and Associates, 380 Interlock and Crest in Suite 100, Broomfield, Colorado 80021.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. As I mentioned, my name is Carl Barton. I'm with Kimley Horn and Associates, and I'm representing the applicant in the Horse Creek Retreat uh rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment. Um, want to go ahead and first um thank Leila for the very in-depth presentation. Um, she did uh lay out a lot of the groundwork, so I'm trying not to cover too much of the same ground, but I think there are a couple of points that I do want to make sure that we that we hit here, so. Okay, awesome. Thank you. So um, so we do have a a couple of items in front of you this morning. The first one is a ratification of the comprehensive uh plan um land use from agricultural large scale to residential low land use category. This this uh amendment would bring the uh the site into alignment with the surrounding um comp plan land uses that uh surround the property. And then following with that is, as uh as discussed, a zone change request to go from agricultural three to another agricultural zone district, the A1 District. I seem to have advanced too far. There way to go back. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Um, so first, you know, this is a similar map to the one that that Leila depicted um before. A couple of things I want to talk about here is so in its uh approval of the land use amendment, the Planning Commission considered some of the policies and goals and things like that that the Adams County Comp Plan recommends. And many of those are in fact related to housing, of course. And not to not necessarily state all of the uh the policies um in detail, but there is a lot in the Advancing Adams Plan regarding housing, the need for more housing, the need for diversity of housing types, the need for different price points, the need for different um lifestyles to be supported. And so with this um land use amendment and the follow-on zoning request, what we what we were proposing here is something we really think is sort of very reasonable diversity for this area. We've spent a lot of time going through this this process, doing the conceptual design and and everything like that. And even before that, thinking about what is the appropriate land use, what is the appropriate zone district that we're going to request to really um come up with something we think is that provides that reasonable diversity for something that the county, obviously, as states in their plan, is really looking to do, which is to increase the housing amount and options within the county. So with that, we've, you know, and looking at the aligning with the um surroundings, that's why we've come up with this request for the residential low land use designation, which, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission did approve, and we're of course asking you to to ratify. So the next step of that, of course, is for the zone change. So when the the residential low land use category does provide for a number of different zone districts, many of them, as as Leila mentioned, two of them, you've got the estate and the R1C, which allow for, I would say, perhaps even more variant, being into some more of the suburban densities. But we've made it made a choice here for this request. Um, again, thinking about compatibility, thinking about that reasonable diversity for the A1 Zone District, which per the Adams County Code is an agricultural zone district. It is a zone district that is intended to support rural lifestyles. That's what it states in the code. And so that was a very conscious choice on our part to select this zone district, again, looking for that reasonable diversity and for compatibility. Now, our proposal here um through the A1 Zone District um does not necessarily maximize the density that's allowed under that zone district. That's why I want to turn to a little bit of this discuss here this conceptual site plan. Now, as Leila mentioned, this site plan is not what is necessarily being um reviewed or under consideration with the Board of County Commissioners this morning, but I think it is really important. And what it does is it demonstrates the intent for this development. And it demonstrates that it does, it does provide for a diversity of lot sizes. I don't want to focus too much on how small the uh or the minimum lot sizes that we're looking at here, but I want to talk also about about some of the larger lot sizes. So we do have lots that are in the seven to 10 acre range, five to seven acres, and then a four acre minimum here. Now, there are a number of drivers for this conceptual site plan. Um, one is, as I mentioned, is the the um number of lots that is proposed, 47 additional lots. There's one one property out there already. The next one is looking at compatibility. Um, and then the third one is also very much to the water. And so that's been talked about a lot, and that's an ongoing process. And so we, as the development team, have been looking very closely at the amount of water that's available on the site. That is an ongoing process. We don't have a a full and complete answer right now on how much water there is, but it's working. We're working through that. We do have a fairly high, I can say that we do have a fairly high level of confidence with that we'd be able to to support the 47 additional lots. That's why that's the number, that's why that's here today, is why this is the conceptual plan we're bringing forward. There is a chance that that number will change. Um, but it, we think at this point that that change would be minimal, not large, and it won't be more. So we would not have any, the ability to do any more than this. So um, as covered in the uh um presentation, there are a lot of things that come next through this through this process. So we are going to have to go through the major subdivision process, and I want to um use a term that I heard Commissioner Odoricio use when we were talking about the budgets, which is this term of accountability. So what we're presenting here today, we're presenting in public, we're discussing this in public, and we've got some really important pieces that I want to talk about here. The first one is we've got this 150-foot setback around the perimeter of the property. It's 150-foot no build easement is kind of what we're calling it. And the standard in A1 is 20 feet. Rear yard setback in in the A1 Zone District is 20 feet. So we're adding additional 130 feet to that. Again, this is a, this is an effort to increase the um level of compatibility with the surroundings. There's also, of course, we talked a lot about the wa- um the the uh way that we've positioned the lots, I should say, you know, so we've got a variety of lot sizes here, a variety of lot sizes here. And um, we've taken those lots and we've, the smaller of the lots are towards the center of the development, the larger of the lots are towards the um exterior of the development. And we're going to have to be back here in front of Planning Commission for the Board of County Commissioners, and again, in front of the neighbors through a public process for this next step. So that's why we're very happy to show this aid. This is our starting point. We don't know for sure if it's going to end up exactly like this, and one of the reasons I say that is we did hold a second neighborhood meeting. We held that on November 15th, 16th, excuse me, of uh of this year. And while I wouldn't say that we had a meeting of the minds and agreement on the lot sizes um that we could have out here, I do want to say that there's, there were some things that were surfaced that I think that could be actionable as we go forward, and I want to use those as examples, perhaps, as we talk about some of the next steps. Um, and so one of them with, for an example, I'll say the the um detention. Right now, concept is a concept level. We've got a detention pond in the northeast corner of the property to serve the entire site. Um, maybe it doesn't need to necessarily be that. Where I'm going with this is there's plenty of opportunities in the next step, and I think there is some fertile ground in some of the next steps for us to continue to work with the neighbors on this to, again, increase their compatibility um and and ha- and have a development that everyone can be um satisfied with. So I do want to highlight this. Again, this is not something that's necessarily, it's actually not, not necessarily, it's not required um in the A1 Zone District. It's this uh no build easement. Um, you know, when it comes down to looking at at how we've approached compatibility, we've got this You know, when it comes down to looking at, at how we've approached compatibility, we've got this, this no build easement, this section shows in Bowden Road. Um, got 130 feet, um, before you could put up any structure. That, that's how we're think, conceptualizing right now, any structure. And so this shows-
150 or 130?
Should be 150.
Right, okay.
Um, I'm sorry. It's 130 feet above, beyond the 20 feet.
Got it.
That's where I was trying to go. That's why I had the numbers in my head. So it's 150 feet, standard setback is 20. Um, so there's, so this is a nod to that, a nod to that compatibility. And then the other thing I want to talk about too is, is again, the, the lot size. You know, that we're requesting the A1 Zone District. It's not our intent to build to the minimum lot size that's required. I'm showing you a conceptual plan that shows that we're not doing that. Um, and, you know, that is again, a nod to how we've tried to address some of the concerns going again to, to larger lots. Um, their county has a lot of goals related to housing that goals related to housing and requirements that come along with the development that really make it important for us to, to build an appropriate development. As I mentioned, we did hold another, uh, neighborhood meeting on November 16th. And at that meeting, we, we depict, we showed these, these visual renderings. So this is a picture upon which we place some fairly typical houses out there. Now, full disclosure, of course, you can look at this. This is a rendering. It's not, does not depict what the development will actually look like. Um, you know, there's landscaping and things like that that the owners will put in here. But I think we did, we presented these because we did hear from the neighbors that there were concerns about the density and the loss of views that comes from that density. And I certainly will not stand up here and claim that you're not going to see these houses, or that from a certain point of view that this house is not going to stand between you and the mountains. But the idea with these renderings was in fact to demonstrate that this development will not create a wall of additional houses that's going to block any view of the, the mountains to the west. Uh, this photo is actually taken from the road. So, um, on Emboden Road, looking west, any residents from their homes are going to be taking this view in from additional 150 feet to the east approximately and somewhat. So this view looks, uh, west across Emboden Road. And then this view looks to the, uh, from the southeast corner of the development to the northwest. And again, it just depicts what that, what that might look like. What we did here is we took, we, variety of housing types. Um, we placed them generally in the center of the lot, with the exception of these on the perimeter. We placed them in the center of the space between the 150-foot no build and the road. So we think that's probably a fairly realistic, um, depiction of where those, those might be. So, yeah, we've talked a lot about this. Next step, you know, we will be back in front of you. Um, to us, a lot of these issues, we've talked about the water rights. Um, you know, we are doing our due diligence on that. That is an ongoing process and is continuing. Uh, there will be traffic studies, drainage and stormwater, and of course wildlife, all these things, um, will get addressed. In summary, I'd like to ask that you ratified the Planning Commission 6-1 decision to approve the, uh, Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Uh, we'd like to ask that you take the, uh, Planning Commission's 6-1 vote to recommend the change in the zone district to this, this particular agricultural zone district on this, on this piece of ground. Um, and, you know, I want to, you know, we've got some important things here regarding the conceptual site plan that we will be back in front of you to, uh, discuss and present, and, um, we'll have another opportunity to discuss a lot more of, of the details. And, and I, like I said, I do think there's some really fertile ground going forward for continued collaboration with the neighbors to address some of their concerns. With that, I can answer a question.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Uh, Commissioner Pinter.
Um, thanks for this presentation. In looking through the letters, um, from residents as well as um, the interested parties such as utilities, et cetera, the one that came up that I feel like maybe I've missed the detail that I would like to hear more about is the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, particularly the comments on mule deer.
Yeah.
Um, with the no human activity between December 1st and April 30th. Let's start with that one, and then they had a few other comments.
Yeah. So when it comes to that, that first comment regarding the mule deer, um, much of this area is mule deer habitat. Much of it has development on it. And I think our approach to that has really been about, okay, when, when it comes down to, this is again, one of those next step things. And even maybe beyond the subdivision itself, but this really comes into, well, when are we disturbing the land in order to construct? And I think that I've, you know, without saying for certain what will happen in this instance, I've certainly been in, involved with many projects that have, you know, development windows based on wildlife. That's, you know, fairly common. So looking forward, I think that's probably how we would address that comment to, to address CPW's concerns. And then there's also a number of other different things you can do within, within CCRs and stuff like that related to, for instance, fencing. Colorado Parks and Wildlife has a really, uh, something I've implemented in other projects, a really excellent, um, fencing with wildlife and mine document. Um, that's something that I've seen and required and requested to be implemented on, on other projects as well. So that's kind of when you get, start getting into that next phase and CCRs and the development standards that come with the subdivision can really get into some details to address those concerns.
Thank you for that. Um, I see that, um, this, the, the staff were ahead of you or on it, or, um, in looking at the documentation. I hear your comments that reflect that you've read the letter. What I didn't see, and I'm asking for help in finding, is if there is a note or some other prohibition that would reflect um, this prohibition of human activity from December to April.
And I can help answer that. So we do typically see comments from Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Um, we see commonly, uh, um, burrowing owls, um, adjacent to prairie dog, uh, areas. So that is a condition that we would add to the subdivision. So it would prevent development during certain times, or we can add in conditions to the subdivision, for example, a wildlife-friendly fence, um, that's approved by Colorado Parks and Wildlife around this, uh, subdivision. Those are the things that would come at a later process. It would not necessarily be applicable to the rezone because this doesn't create any additional lots. It, they would still be entitled to one single family home per lot with the A1 rezone.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I think that that was, that gets at my question. It's like, when is the appropriate time for that timeframe to be acknowledged? Given the vast number of resident complaints and the concerns, um, paying attention to all the types of concerns is really important to me. So what would you recommend as a way to notice this concern from Colorado Parks and Wildlife?
So we will, um, also note, send the referral to, of the subdivision to Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Then we will work with Colorado Parks and Wildlife to add appropriate conditions to the subdivision plat um, that would reflect those comments. So the comments about the mule deer, um, and the development patterns or timelines restrictions for that.
Okay. And that would also address their comments around mapping areas for wildlife migration pathways. And there is a few, I believe the color was brown, but there were like marked out areas where like this is not suitable for building.
So a lot of this area is within that, um, hatched area that was provided by Colorado Parks and Wildlife. It is a recommendation at this time, and not suitable development would render these properties unbuildable. Um, so I don't believe we can condition it based on that prohibition from the Colorado Parks and Wildlife since it's only a recommendation.
Okay. Um, there was also, um, a piece around bald eagle nesting roosts and sightlines and light pollution. Um, is that something that would be addressed at this time, or is that something that would also be addressed later?
So that would all be conditions put on the subdivision plat. We can't necessarily condition a rezone based on Colorado Parks and Wildlife comments. Um, it's just not something we can do with a rezone. Um, but we will capture those comments at the time of subdivision where it would be more applicable.
Okay. And that would include, because the residents themselves raised light pollution. It wasn't in every letter, but it was a frequently commented upon theme. Um, construction itself generates a lot of noise and light pollution as well as potential need for streetlights and what have you. Um, like, how would we go about addressing light pollution, assuming this, uh, project moves forward?
And so we would work with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, um, to ensure that their concerns about the bald eagles are addressed within the subdivision. Um, as far as streetlights, we don't have a requirement on streetlights because these would be rural, uh, roadways. And then additionally, uh, for the single-family homes, if they were to have lighting, uh, we do have operational standards that has to be downward cast. Um, it can't be, can't go past the property line. So all of that is within our code and would be applicable and added as conditions during the subdivision plat.
Okay. Um, I would be interested, I wasn't aware that we were not applying our standards around downward cast lighting to rural roadways given how rare, um, dark sky areas are becoming in the United States. It might be lag as conversation for best practices forward.
It's like staff has something to add.
Yeah, I see you all fidgeting. So I don't know if I tipped off something.
So roadway lighting is not required out here because these are rural roadways.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It actually goes the other way.
Yes. If a home were to have, um, lights on the home, we do see the jellyfish lighting a lot. Uh, all of that has to be downward cast, so it couldn't extend past the property lines.
Oh, you mean the, the like trim lighting?
Yes.
Okay, jellyfish, not like a jellyfish, but the bran jellyfish.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I got it. Okay. Those are my, I know, right? Jellyfish lighting. Okay. Those are my questions at this time. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Uh, thank you very much. If you would have a seat. Uh, we'd like to offer, uh, who's up first for, from the public?
Tim Wagner.
Wagner, please come on down. Please state your full name and your address for the record.
Hello, uh, my name's Timothy Lee Wagner. I live at 15050 Watkins Road. I'm not comfortable doing this, but, uh, I, uh, I've lived here my whole life, 51 years. And I've seen all the developments from Rocking Horse to Great Rock, where it's around the lake. And, uh, all that scared me to death. And I was like, what, what's going on here? Why are they letting this happen? Meaning you guys. And, uh, after seeing everything that's happened, I'm happy for that. It's been done tastefully. It's been done with a lot of thought. And, uh, I think what they're trying to do here just fits in with what's going on with the rest of the community around there. Progress just keeps happening. And, uh, like I said, when I was younger, I was against it 100%. It just, it encroached on everything I did. We farmed there for five generations. And, uh, it was sad to see what was happening around there. And seeing now what's going on, I just quit farming this year because it's not applicable for me to keep farming. It's, it's gotten so condensed and so small, I can't use my equipment like I need to, move it up and down the roads. It just, this is progress, and that's, that's changed out there. And it's not farming like it used to be. But having the community around us build in, I have some of the best friends I, I've ever had because of development and people moving in, being a neighbor of mine. So, uh, I guess that's all I got to say. Uh, I, I'm for the development. I think what they're trying to do is, is a good thing. Yep.
Tiffany Neal.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tiffany Neal. Sorry. Uh, address 15175 Alstead Street, Hudson, Colorado 80642. I am in Bromley Estate South. Um, I was here in October asking you to vote no. And then you got to vote, you had a delay because the developer wasn't prepared. Today, I come to you with 102 signatures of neighbors on every corner of this development asking you to reject the Comprehensive Plan and the rezone. We're not trying to stop him from developing his property. We're simply trying to maintain what Adams County spent a lot of time developing in the Comprehensive Plan. Um, if you don't mind, Leila, can you please pull up the original, what, the future use picture? Sorry. Um, so when you look at this, as it stands today, you guys agreed that this should be farmland, that this should be where the history is. And I understand that it's become difficult because of the amount of traffic that's been introduced to the area and that it's made it harder for our farmers. But this is something that you guys stand on. This is something that unfortunately, I wish Commissioner Baco was here because I would ask her, this is your district. Why are we seeing so much aggressive change in this district? Why are we bringing so many people and so much lighting and so much interruption to our natural environment? We have bald eagles, you know, they land on my roof all the time. And we have deer through our yard, and we have coyotes. A little scary. But, you know, we have a huge amount of wildlife. And disrupting this by dropping a community about the size of a neighborhood that's miles away telling us that it fits when it doesn't. It does not fit. We spoke with Sheriff Rick, who happens to be on one of the adjacent properties to this planned development. And he said that we are 20 minutes away from service calls. If we call law enforcement, it's 20 minutes on a good day for them to arrive out to survive, to help us. If you talk about fire, the stories may be a little bit better in that they're four miles away. But Brighton Fire, when I called them, asking them, why didn't you stop this? Because there's no fire hydrants, there's not enough water, as you were shared in the previous meeting about a house that almost was lost this summer. And we had to call Keansburg and Hudson to get support. They said, well, you moved out knowing the risk. You're right. I accept that. Except for today, that's farmland. And today, this block that says 156, sorry, 7? This other blue one, just adjacent to the left, that is also owned by the developers. They, I would assume, have intentions to come to you at a later date after you've approved this and ask for similar or same, except for that's got a pretty clear pathway to it with no interruptions. So I just am going to ask you, please consider A2, which you can't because that's actually not part of what's being recommended. But A2 keeps it at 10 acres. And I, I know I'm over, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But it's just, we need something better. We need something better than this. And so who do I give signatures to?
Give it to our attorney.
Okay.
You're right. Thank you very much, Ms. Neal. Okay. Next up?
Phil Wendell.
Could please state your full name and your address for the record?
Good morning. My name's Phil Wendell. I live at 15920 Nashville Street. I'm one of the residents in the estates of Bromley. And I'm also asking you to reject the two proposals this morning, the, uh, the comprehensive, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as well as the rezoning request. I'm, I've tried a couple of different things. I haven't felt like I've effectively made my case. I'm going to try something a little different this morning. I'm focusing on the recommended findings of fact that are in Chart 20 of Leila's proposal. And when I look at that, there's seven recommended findings of fact. And I urge you to reject those. When I look at those findings of fact, when I do my analysis, five of those seven findings of fact are demonstratably false. I don't understand, I disagree that the proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Plan is aligned with all of the effort and all of the work that was put in through the update that was approved by this commission just over a year ago. With respect to, uh, recommending finding of fact number seven, you know, it's compatible with the surrounding area, it's harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. I agree that looking at residential low is more aligned. I disagree that putting 48 homes in a 288-acre area is compatible with the existing estates of Bromley. Immediately to the east, that has 58 homes, 10 more homes, in a 688-acre area. So we're proposing allowing zoning that would allow us to- So we're proposing allowing zoning that would allow us to, what's been discussed, doubling the density, potentially more than doubling the density if we look at the 2.5 acres, but even taking them at their word with the four acres minimum lot size. We're looking at, if you just, the scale on this map does not really paint the picture. Yes, if you go out two and three and four miles, you can find homes that are two and a half acres, four acres. But if you look literally across the street at the estates of Bromley, we have, well, if you just look at the surrounding area, I'm sorry, the immediately adjacent homes, you have one home that's lower than 10 acres in size. You've got over 75 homes that are greater than 10 acres in size. I understand that this is not replotting. I understand that this is not creating new lots. But what you decide today, balance those decisions. And deciding to allow A1 with those lower densities allows decisions in the future that are not compatible with my existing neighborhood. Again, I urge you to reject both proposals this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was everyone on the list.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to come down and speak that didn't get a chance to sign the list? Come on down. If you would, please state your full name and your address for the record.
My name is Karen Geisler. I live at 15590 in Bowden Road, which is the northeast corner of this proposed deal. And I would like to address a few of the things that have been said. First of all, the neighborhood meeting that happened on November 16th, I was not invited to. I have been to everything since the beginning of this. There was nothing sent to me, there was nothing my next door neighbor got sent to him. The sad thing is that most of the people that are in the surrounding areas, well, let me start back, I agree with everything Tiffany said and everything, but the, I got the signatures for the people against, from the east and the west and the south side of the proposed property. And I had never talked to any of these neighbors before, but they all had the same problem with this development that I have, or that have been in the comments. They have not been notified of a lot of this that has been going on. They, none of them knew about the meeting that happened today. And a lot of them, even after I told them about the meeting today, could not come because of work or previous commitments. The people that I did talk to and get the signatures from do not belong to Bromley Estates. They are just independent people that have moved here. But they did move here into the country with the same reasons that I moved, which was to get away from the city, to get away from people, houses, atmosphere, congestion, crime, noise. This proposal is like dropping a little mini-city in the existing, our existing dreams that we've had. I moved into this area over 17 years ago and we brought the property because of the location. We happen to be next to the Farmer's Gun Club. In the back of us is Horse Creek Reservoir. There is one neighbor that's to the other side of us, that's over 11 acres away. And across from us is the 288 acres of beautiful farmland when I moved there. Now, I'm not objecting to the growth. It has been an amazing amount of growth that has happened in the 17 years since we have lived in this country life, you know? And I don't object to the growth, you know? But I do object to this, putting this right in the middle of the country and the people that don't want it. We have
Thank you.
the buildings that are already existing of
Thank you, Ms. Geisler.
Okay, I'm Box Elder, I'm sorry, but
It's all right. Thank you very much.
We have existing, if they want to move there, let them move there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that did not sign up that would like to come down and speak? Please come on down. Please state your full name and your address for the record.
Hey, John, I'm Kurt Lackey, 15770 in Bowden Road. I live right in the middle, across the street. This in no way is compatible, I don't know what their explanation is, it doesn't, under my understanding, go with the plans that were for this area. This construction, just with what the area is and everything will change, the whole demographics with roads and stuff, there, it's going to take 20 years. When I went in the Marine Corps, I came back, my mom had moved out in the country. When somebody sold a property next to theirs, they built 250 houses behind them out in Douglas County. And from that point on, for the last 30 years, people have been stealing out of her barn, stealing out, it's not necessarily the people that moved back there, but the construction, people follow the construction to steal their tools and everything else. This is going to be 20 years of like that. The view, they made a, I don't know if you have that, the view that they made up of what it would look like, that's pretty close, except for the scale of the buildings that they put on there aren't even close to what the scale is. The scale, you figure that driveway that you see there is 20 foot wide. The scale of most of those houses are going to be at least 40 foot wide and that shows a house approximately 20, that would be about 20 foot wide out there. If you put the real size of that house right there, it's going to be almost the distance between those first four there for the first house and the second ones are going to be about the size of that one. But they're going to be directly in the way. They show the mountains there because of the sky, but that's going to be part of what's destroyed. We have over two dozen mule deer and deer and foxes. We've got six eagles that have nests in the back of our property. We have, I don't know how many owls. There's quite a few coyotes that come back and forth on, but the, one of the biggest things in this whole deal that we haven't improved anything on is there's water there. This has been dry farming for 50 years. The people that own this property had a pivot down four miles is the only place that they could pull water up to do farming. This has all been dry farming and they're supposed to pull 48 wells out of this area? Not possible. The street lighting, they can't put any street lighting up because the city, the county has already told them, DAA has wanted some streetlights taken down to their property, put up without being okay, because they're afraid that the planes are going to get contact and think that that's the airport. So this is not compatible in any way with our area.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please feel free to come down. Thank you. Please state your full name and your address for the record.
Good morning. Irene Lobato, 15660 in Bowden Road. And I don't want to repeat what everybody else said, but I would like to say that our family is opposed to the rezoning for all the reasons mentioned. You know, it just doesn't really fit in with this, with the neighborhood. And as Tiffany stated, that rezoning opens the door to change zoning around there and create an entirely different feel out here. And one thing that I'd like to mention is Public Works has no plans for, in the five-year plan, for infrastructure improvement, so, and the water is a huge issue since we've had issues with redwelling wells and that kind of thing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Rhonda Lackey, 15770 in Bowden Road. I'd like to address the sewer damage to the environment for all the extra septic systems that will have to be put in. Again, the animals, the water, the property values will go down. It does not preserve the royal character with all these houses. That's just not rural. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
James Inright, 33400 East 156 Court. We're on the west side, back right up against the proposed development. And certainly, we'd be very disappointed to have that kind of density behind us. We moved out there with the belief that 35 acres was pretty much the surrounding area, maybe some 10 acre lots further over. My great concern is the water. New Adams County adopted a 300-year plan. And it's interesting, I don't know what the methodology is to determine that. I think it's Bromley Estates on the east side. I believe that those wells are approved at 100-year contingency, but yet, if I understand correctly, some of those wells have already dried up after 10 years. So that is a huge concern. I don't know how many straws we can put in the ground and keep pulling out. You know, the recharge rate of ozocifers is extremely low. And that's huge. And then we've got additional developments. We're talking about the other side of Watkins potentially developing. I mean, it's, again, my concern is how many straws can we put in the ground? And what is the methodology to prove the 300-year supply? So I would like to know that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, coming back to the board for discussion. I'm going to go ahead and ask a question. We'll start with the last one, the water supply. Can you explain to us the process, methodology, and who we rely on to determine?
Yes, so the applicant will have to provide documentation to staff at the time of subdivision. That documentation is sent out to the State Division of Water Resources that will then analyze that information and provide a letter back to staff that either indicates that yes, there's a 300-year water supply, or no, there is not a 300-year water supply. Staff does not do that analysis. That is sent out to the State Division of Water Resources. And I believe the applicant does have representatives here to discuss water if you have additional questions.
That would be great. Why don't we take this checkbox off? Let's check this box and deal with water.
Good morning, Board. I appreciate your time. My name is Ryan Farm with Monson, Cummins, Show and Far, 13511 North Gate Estates, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80921. I am an attorney. I practice water law. My firm is primarily a water law firm. At this stage, the, you know, the applicants are requesting a zoning and a comprehensive plan amendment. However, prior to doing any of this, they wanted to make sure that they had sufficient amount of water to be able to move forward with any type of development for this particular property. With that, they brought me on board. They've also brought Steve Barrett, engineer from HRS Water Consultants out of Denver, on board as well, to do an initial assessment on the water rights and the potential availability of water to provide to this subdivision. The subdivision is proposed to be using Denver Basin aquifer water. This is not, this is not alluvial aquifer water that you would use for irrigation that was mentioned earlier with a center pivot. Alluvial irrigation requires a heck of a lot more water than what we'd be seeing from a residential subdivision, which would be based on the Denver Basin aquifers below the property. These aquifers, we've run models and done initial assessments to determine the quantification of the water, underlying the property of what's there. This is a model assessment endorsed and used by the State Engineers' Office. We have preliminary state engineer findings of water source underlying the property to show sufficient water to provide for these lots. We are looking at the lots, about 48 right now. That is predicated heavily on the initial assessments for water resources. We're looking to do about half an acre foot allocation to each particular individual lot, which is very consistent with planned use for residential lots throughout many counties within Colorado. It, we've assessed the water, we've seen the preliminary assessment from the State Engineers' Office to show that we have a water supply to meet that around 0.4 to 0.5 acre feet per lot for provision for 300 years. I mean, we're ostensibly looking at 22 acre feet annually of use. And there is actually more than that underlying the property. We're not maximizing the amount of water that's quantified underlying the property. We're actually not using about half, we're only using about half of what's left in the Laramie Fox Hills Aquifer, but utilizing the Meridian Aquifers to provide the water. So at this particular time, the initial assessments have been done, the initial reports from the State Engineers' Office have indicated this, our water rights engineer has also indicated this as well. And then we will also continue to pursue and finalize these plans to provide with, you know, any future subdivision application process to show the water sufficiency. That gets all put together and then that's part of what gets sent on to the State Engineers' Office for them to opine on whether there's sufficient 300-year water supply. So at this point, the applicant has been moving forward with the understanding of water needs and continue to address that and we'll hope to be able to submit that in the application for subdivision process.
All right. Thank you. I have a question, wait, just before you leave, a question from Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, just in the spirit of staying on water, so we have water as like one topic. I just, you said that last part really quickly, but
Apologies.
that was the piece that I was waiting for, is that while you have an opinion, you're an expert, you're a water lawyer, this is your job. You are here for the applicant to help them solve a problem, but your work is checked and verified by the state engineer.
Yeah, we've already got preliminary assessments from the state engineer. And then we will get, down the road, we will get final assessments from the state engineer. That will then be provided in the application process for the subdivision, major subdivision, which then gets sent on by the planning commission to the state engineer to actually evaluate, to make sure. And then the board has provided that, you know, the planning commission is, and then the board provided the water sufficiency report from the state engineers' office, whether saying yes or no as far as available water supplies.
Okay, thank you. I think that's really helpful. As was mentioned by some of the folks testifying, there was some testimony in October about a fire and like scrambling to get enough water in an emergency and that the previous water estimates were not sufficient, appeared to have been not sufficient for the community need, with the comments on dry wells and that kind of a thing. So that does raise anxiety on my part, but I'm not a water engineer. So either from you or from our staff, if there's any comment on the evaluation process so that we have some certainty from the state engineer, I think that'd be really helpful.
And that, yes, that does get provided.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? While we have the applicant's water attorney on. Yeah. So you could talk to staff, but we, the point, the part of the hearing where we I understand. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, please have a seat.
Thank you, Board.
Other questions I would have for staff, we're looking at, right now, what is, what are the, did you, can you pull up the zoning map of what things are zoned around it? Not, yeah. We have all the specific zones around it?
So I can go over to the zoning map again. So all of this light green is agricultural three zoning. That is intended for 35 acres or larger. And then a lot of this patched that says PUD in pink is within a plan unit development. So a lot of our newer plan unit developments are zoned as plan unit development, but a lot of the older ones are zoned as one of the Adams County Zone Districts, so agricultural one or agricultural two. And then they have a plan unit development overlay that amended some of the requirements of the underlying zone districts. So for example, directly to the east is the states at Bromley North and South. That is agricultural one zoning, but then the PUD overlay did amend some of the requirements within the A1 zone district.
Can you give me an example of some of those changes to the default, you know? Across the street to the east?
So some of them were lot sizes. Those require 10 acre lots in estates of Bromley North and South. There's also some additional performance standards, some building requirements, and then restrictions on materials within that plan unit development. um, and then restrictions on materials within that plan unit development.
Interesting. Material requirements?
Yes, a lot of our plan unit developments, so your home can only build with, or could be built with specific materials. A lot of the plan unit develops, developments also include, uh, models that could be built within plan unit developments. So, a, a lot of our PUDs are very specific. So, there would be four different models that could be built, so you knew the house that would be built within that subdivision.
And that would have been the county that would have imposed that at one time in the past, correct?
Yes, so, um, those requirements are within the plan unit development, which the county enforces. Any restrictions or covenants, uh, the HOA would then enforce. So, I'm, a lot of them have both, and the HOA would then have more specific requirements.
Got it. Okay, uh, thank you. I have a question for the applicant. If this, you're proposing, I understand, a zoning, but this is the first step towards close to fifty lots. Um, do you have a plan B if you were to, if we were to say, uh, no to this today?
Um, well, that's, I mean, that's, I guess, a more of a question for the owner on the plan B. But it's, I would say this, is that the, the development type and amount and all of those things that are being proposed here today are the result or the outcome, I would say, of a lot of the other things that are just in general occurring around us, right? So, you look at the Advancing Adams County Plan. You know, the needs of the county have evolved over time, what the kind of development that's gone on out there. And so, what we're proposing here is a development that's responsive to those evolving needs, but is also responsive to the, the surrounding context and trying to strike the balance between those. Um, so that's what the, you know, the the balance between all those impets, the needs of the county and achieving the county's goals in terms of the plan, the, the, the county zoning, and the agricultural zone district we're applying, we're applying for. Then, an amount of water, I know, the infrastructure, the amount of infrastructure that needs to be built to support any level of development is fairly fixed. And therefore, we've got a development that responds to the, the needs that, for the infrastructure needs that this development needs to carry. So, um, you know, I don't necessarily know. That would really be a question for, for client, the owner, but, so, we're, we think we've presented something pretty good here.
Okay. Now I have a question for staff. Thank you very much. Um, tell us about the road improvements that the applicant would have to make to and from this location, from other major corridors?
Um, and we have Lori Clark. She's one of our senior civil engineers that can help provide an answer to that question.
If I could add in the traffic study timeline, I would be interested.
Hi, Lori Clark, senior engineer. Um, so roadway improvements, um, for a development like this would be, um, required at the time of subdivision. Um, so, um, not required for this particular application. And we would be looking at improvements to one hundred and sixtieth, um, in Bowden Road, and specifically the intersection of one hundred and fifty-second and in Bowden, pending on the results of the, uh, traffic impact study. That would be required at subdivision.
And is the scope of any potential requirements only limited to what's immediately adjacent to the property?
Um, in this case, um, we would be looking at one hundred and sixtieth all the way, um, west to Watkins. So, and one hundred and fifty-second is not immediately adjacent. Um, so, in this case, um, the scope of roadway improvements, um, would extend beyond what's adjacent to the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from Commissioner Henry?
Yeah, I, right now, we're not making those decisions. You, you can go sit down.
Thank you.
If I'm right, we're not making those decisions. We're just trying to decide if we're gonna change. Yes, um, I think we're going way beyond the scope of what this decision is actually made. We might not, this might not even get approved. So those questions might be irrelevant in regards to what we're trying to approve on. I am gonna make a statement. I personally don't feel this com, this, this unit or this plan is actually conducive for the community and for our plan, uh, our comprehensive plan. We worked really hard on those comprehensive plans. Um, and I feel that this is probably a pretty drastic change to what we already have planned for that area. So I will be a no vote, um, in regards to this.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or actions? Mr. Pinter?
Yeah, um, I just wanna chime in, and I agree, and I, I think that it's helpful, Commissioner Henry, to hear that, because I think that I've been taking notes from the public and pulling things from the letters to try to understand. Community harmony and compatibility is a difficult thing to articulate, and the fundamental difference between the potential for use by right of two and a half acres versus ten acre lots is significant, as has been demonstrated by the neighbors. Um, I do hear from the water lawyer that the, the state engineer would have to verify their work, but I have some questions for staff on like what that would look like and what is our process. I know that we are not engineers that certify that, and that's why there are water experts at the state. I have sort of like a, a bundle of concerns around the harmony with community, the disruptions to wildlife, as well as the access to water. So thank you for naming that.
Any other questions or, okay. Uh, my concern, uh, I have a question about if this were to come back later as an A-two rezone. Um, what's the minimum lot size for A-two? It's ten acres, correct?
Yes, it is a ten acre minimum, and I think Christie would like to chime in.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just chiming in on the comprehensive plan piece, which does not support the A-two zoning. Um, the comprehensive plan is a document that is approved by the planning commission, which was approved back in September by the planning commission and is submitted to the Board of County Commissioners for ratification. So, that is an application that has been approved by the planning commission.
So the comp, let's clarify that, because I appreciate that. The comp plan's already been amended
Correct.
by the planning commission
Yes.
to allow, um, residential low.
Correct.
Um, but that doesn't change the zone.
Right.
What other zones would fit under residential low?
So residential low fits residential estate, um, A-one, and R-one C zonings.
I'm gonna write that down. It would say A-one, residential estate, RE, and R-one C. What's the minimum lot size for each of those?
So residential estate is a two-point-five acre minimum. If they have public water or sewer, it's a one acre minimum for residential estate. Residential one C is a seven thousand square foot minimum. So the A-one zone district is the largest zone district that would be supported with a residential low, future land use designation. Um, and as seen in the current future land use map, um, a lot of the properties do already have the future land use designation of residential low. It's this tan. So all of these properties could potentially rezone to an A-one or a smaller zone district um, if they have the water rights, and it would potentially be supported by the comprehensive plan as amended in the Advancing Adams Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, let me just clarify that. So the R-one C would be seven thousand square feet, okay? Which is roughly six potential lots per forty-two thousand square foot acre. Okay? Forty-two thousand square feet for an acre. Uh, that would mean six per, and then the A-one that we're looking at today is a minimum two-point-five as well?
That is correct. And residential estate is two-point-five acre minimum unless they have public water.
Or it's one acre with public water. And so, um, and before the comp plan was changed by the planning commission, what was the designation here? Future land use designation?
Agricultural large scale, which only supports our agricultural three-zone district, which really is intended for farming. Residential is a secondary use on A-three lots.
And so for me, that's dispositive from the standpoint, or it, it influences my, my analysis on this because it, our comp plan that we just finished last year said that this area, we think would be large-scale agriculture based on that former designation. Is that correct?
That is correct. That was what was, uh, identified at Advancing Adams.
Got it. Yet the planning commission has identified all the housing that is already around this development as being, um, has already identified, acknowledged all the housing, as evidenced by the multiple ten-acre owners that came in today, as being more conducive for some sort of large property residential, low intensity. So therefore, they changed their comp plan designation to match what they see as a trend in the neighborhood, including folks that came in to talk today.
Yeah, so when the, um, comprehensive plan amendment was done, it looked at the county as a whole. So with these comprehensive plan amendment, it's allows for the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners with their ratification to look at a site-specific area. So areas adjacent to, um, let's say, the city of Aurora. Aurora is rapidly annexing land. That land is changing. It allows for, uh, a site-by-site analysis of looking at the future land use designation to see if a change is compatible and or appropriate. In this case, the planning commission felt that the change from agricultural large scale to residential low is appropriate in this area. A lot of the surrounding properties do contain that, uh, residential low, future land use designation, including properties to the west that are not, uh, within residential PUDs. Those could, um, easily rezone to A-one, RE, or residential one C if they have the water. Uh, but that comprehensive plan amendment process really allows for a site-specific analysis. And the planning commission did find that this is compatible based on looking at this site, this image that is projected, and the future land use designations that are within this area.
With that said, the reason why I bring this up is the comprehensive plan, as determined by the comp, uh, planning commission, has determined future land use designation generally, not zoning, that's us. They've determined that. I agree with that assessment, that this is low-intensity residential neighborhood, as again, evidenced by the folks who live in this neighborhood. I feel like I could support the rezone today to A-one. But that, just because the A-one says it's a minimum two-point-five, doesn't necessarily mean that when this, these folks come back for a subdivision, that I would approve anything less than ten acres, which I think would be more compatible with this neighborhood, ten acre lots, which is similar, more similar to what I see across the street. So for me, I would, I, I'm gonna just, and we may not have the votes Stephen passed today, but I would support today with the notion that the owners of the land need to come back, and I'm not sure I would approve that subdivision and that contemplated subdivision that they're looking at, that they've showed us today. I would say it should be more closer to the ten acre, eight, nine, ten acre lots, uh, across the street and around the surrounding neighborhood. That's me personally. So with that said, I know I'm conflating a little bit of the decision we would have to make later with also the decision we make today. Commissioner Pinter?
Yep, trying to use my, uh, request to speak button. Um, thank you for articulating that, Commissioner Odoricio, and thank you, Leila, Ms. Baslan, for that description as well. I think that is, uh, for me, what I heard most in Commissioner Henry's comments and what was, um, irksome for me is this piece around, if we change it to A-one, they have this non-binding map that shows larger lots, but A-one would allow for two-point-five. And they could come back with everything at four acres. They could come back with four and three and two and a half and a mix, or future land use. Um, once these lots are sold, could be subdivided multiple times, or then even a ten acre parcel, because A-one would allow that. And, and I think that's what is causing my hesitancy, is that if this were an application for ten acre lots, I feel different, but that's not what we see before us. I'm, just, just to, can you confirm that if we approved A-one, they could come back with any size smaller, and it would be used by right? Is that correct?
So there are some restrictions on this as well. Water being a very significant one of those restrictions. The applicant is aware of the, you know, their water rights. They've worked with the state. It is unlikely, and the applicant has stated that it will not increase in number when they come back from subdivision. They just don't have the water rights. We cannot approve a subdivision that does not have a three-hundred-year water supply for each lot. And then additionally, with the subdivision process, compatibility is part of the criteria of approval. So the Board of County Commissioners could deny anything if, you know, the applicant has stated today that they are not doing two-point-five acre lots. If they do come back with a subdivision that is two-point-five acre lots, it will be reviewed by the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners at that time. So you do have that option to consider compatibility at a later time as well.
I just think for me, having done this for a couple of years, when they would come back with the subdivision actual plan, assuming the water issues are resolved uh, without, um, harming water access for neighbors, um, as well, then there becomes a presumption that, oh, well, you approved A-one, you intended everything in A-one. And that, I don't wanna set up future us or future planning commission for that assumption.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna answer to that, because I understand, and I think we're actually on the same page. I just feel like I don't have to approve the subdivision for lots across the street, uh, from these folks to be less than ten. And I could say that that's what I would be concerned about in the future if they come back. Uh, but I can say that I still support, uh, the change of the future use designation, which happened by the planning commission. And I could support an A-one, because I could see these being A-one, ten acre residential lots coming back. And that's what I would support later, potentially, after all the other things are taken into account. So for me, um, I'm okay with proceeding today, but that doesn't mean I would want to be cornered, as Commissioner Pinter suggests could be a risk, uh, for a future decision. So that's my, that's how I feel more comfortable with it, but I get what you're saying. So we've got Commissioner Tedesco, then Commissioner Pinter.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, you know, I'm gonna bring us back to, you know, what's before us today. I'm gonna bring us back to what's before us today, and that is, you know, the comprehensive plan and the amendment that's before us and what we're going to do with that. You know, we can speculate in future cast and whatever you wanna call it, and, you know, on what's gonna happen with this. And I appreciate, you know, someone coming forward with a conceptual plan, but in my eleven years at this, um, I have very rarely ever seen a conceptual plan come back at the same thing that was presented as a conceptual plan. Um, but what's before us today is whether that this is compatible and this is harmonious with the surrounding area. And the designations are already there, and they're already within this area. Um, and that's what we're asked to look at today. Whether I agree or don't agree with either developer or the residents, that's for a future decision. The, uh, decision today is to whether or not we agree with the, uh, amendment to this. And I think that's what we need to, to address today. We still have the authority of approval or disapproval, uh, going forward as to what this looks like coming forward. I think you've heard, I think it's been out of turn, but I think you've heard everybody's opinion and kind of direction as to what they want you to do. Um, I think that's inappropriate and out of turn, but, um, I think you need to work with the neighborhood, and you need to come back with a plan that you think is compatible and acceptable for all those involved. Um, but as far as today and what we're looking at today, uh, I believe it is compatible, it is harmonious, and I think it would be, uh, acceptable to pass a A-one designation in this area. So, um, those are my thoughts. It has nothing to do with what that community is going to look like in the future. I'm sure previous commissioners before me, uh, had the same debate when the estates came in, and it was subdivided in that, that, that time as well. So, you know, I think this is something we're gonna have to deal with, and I think we're gonna deal with it respectfully on all counts, on for everybody involved, and I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you.
Anyone else have their hand up? So, let me clarify. I actually agree with Commissioner Tedesco. I could approve today to go to A-one, because I could see that with the, putting no restrictions or limitations on how we, I would vote in the future on the subdivision. Uh, with that said, uh, do we have a motion to approve, to deny, or to continue? Maybe to allow these guys to come back with a different contemplative plan, uh, even though it's not directly relevant to the zoning today? But, but I Say that again? It's not binding, it's not, uh, directly relevant to the decision today, but it might, uh, set some minds at ease if they came back with a different, uh, contemplative, uh, plan with something with less, um, density. But that's just an option. So we have those three options. Approve today, deny today, or come back with a continuation after, uh, given the applicant to work with the neighbors and maybe come back with something that makes people feel a little bit more comfortable. I personally think it would not be a good idea to. We're gonna eventually have this rezone again. rezone again, it's going to be our, A1, and it makes sense. And in fact, A1 is actually more protective of that neighborhood than RE or R1C. And if you don't do A1 today, somebody, maybe a different applicant, may come back with R1C or RE in the future, and then you're looking at a lot more density. So, I'll be supporting a motion to approve, but I'm anxious to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say.
And I just want to note that there are two separate motions here, so the first is for the comprehensive plan amendment, that's ratification, and then the second is for the rezone.
Hey, Commissioner Tedesco. Want to turn your mic on? Thank you.
I'll make the motions. Can we do them together, or do we have to do them separate? Or do you want them separate?
I think ideally, let's do them separate.
All right. Know how that goes. All right. I move that the staff recommendation for ratifying the planning commission approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, PLN 2023-7, with three findings of fact and two notes to the applicant. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Okay, the ratification of the change to the comprehensive plan does pass, 3-1. Next motion. You pull up on the screen the language, please? Thank you. Commissioner Tedesco?
Chair, I move that the approval of the rezone, RCU 2023-37, with four findings of fact.
I'll make a second, again, because I believe A1 makes sense here. Congratulations, please work with the neighbors and staff on your next steps. With that said, we will adjourn.
You're welcome.